Call and order, regular board meeting for Wednesday, November 19th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pasetto?
Here.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Here.
Mrs. Grzania?
Here.
Mr. Mirba?
Here.
Mrs. Taliani?
Here.
Mr. Ferrari?
Here.
Mr. Sarver?
Here. Please stand for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Welcome, everyone. Uh, to start, I need to amend the agenda. We need to add 12.3B appointment of Kim Snell as the authorized IMRF agent. Okay, at this time, I'd like the Board of Education to look over to minutes for the regular meeting minutes for October 22nd, 2025, the special meeting minutes of October 28th, 2025, the special meeting minutes of October 29th, 2025, the special meeting minutes of October 30th, 2025, special meeting minutes, November 5th, 2025, and special meeting minutes, November 10th, 2025. If there are no corrections or additions, any motion for approval?
Second. Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Grzania?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Mirba?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Okay, we need to go back. I need a motion to amend the agenda for 12.3B appointment of Kim Snell as authorized IMRF agent.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Mirba?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Grzania?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Uh, tonight, under recognitions, we have the Renaissance Program. Uh, our Renaissance Program is just, I think, awesome. They do so many phenomenal things for our student body and our faculty and staff that it's just, it's a ray of sunshine, you know, because they do things in certain times of the year that are nationally renowned each year, and I just want to give them a round of applause for all the things they have done. So...
Hi, my name is Leaning Johnson. I'm a senior here at LP.
My name's Dylan Coopley. I'm a junior.
Um, on behalf of Renaissance, we want to extend our heartfelt appreciation for your continued dedication, leadership, and service to our school, the time, care, and thoughtful decisions you make to ensure that every student has the opportunity to learn, grow, and lead.
A small token of our, as a small token of our gratitude, we want to share some treats that reflect just how much we value you, because you are truly all that in a bag of chips and absolutely worth a hundred grand. Your commitment to our education, your support for our teachers and staff, and your vision to brighten, for a brighter future makes an incredible difference in our daily school experiences.
Thank you for giving so generously of your time and energy to make our school a place where every student can succeed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yep.
Thank you.
Santa gets a gift.
There you go.
Thank you.
Good job.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Might need that tonight. Thank you very much. Again, another round of applause for Renaissance. Tonight, for our division spotlight, we have the English Department, Ms. Alexandra West, and she's going to share information on the IBCC dual credit composition, 1001 and 1002 courses. Alex, you're on.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Board, for having me. I've got my presentation here. So, as President Sarver said, I'm Alexandra West. I teach dual credit composition. This is dual credit with IBCC. This is offered to our seniors. So, we are honored to be able to do this for our seniors. It's just another great opportunity. We offer, we've been offering Comp 1 for four years now, and this will be our first year of being able to offer Composition 1002. And a big shout out and thank you to Principal Cushing. With her, with her encouragement and support, we were able to get Comp 2 on the books for us, for our seniors. So, that's great. And it is basically a writing intensive course. Eighty percent of their grade comes from writing, and that's just to be sure that we are meeting the accreditation with IBCC. Students have to earn a seventy percent or higher for credit, college credit. It's worth three college credit hours. So, at the end of the year, we'll have seniors who have accrued six credit hours essentially for their, for their college career. Currently, we have eighty seniors taking Comp 1. Sixty-seven of those are actually dual credit, and all of the books, thanks to you, have been provided for them. We wanted to make it as cost efficient as possible, and so they take our course for thirty-five dollars each semester. Um, currently, our students, we have one book that we use with the college. We've normed the book between Comp 1 and Comp 2, um, just this spring with the, with IBCC. So, we use read, reason, and write. We have five essays that we write, so it is pretty intense for them. Um, we currently finished up essay four, and we're closing out our semester with essay five. And I just kind of wanted to share a few, a few things with you. Uh, for this to be accredited, they have to write at least five thousand words throughout the entire semester, and so we make sure that we hit that. Um, so a glimpse, we just wrote an evaluation essay where they had to choose a topic and evaluate its effectiveness. Um, and I am so impressed with this group of students and the range of topics that they have chosen. These have been the funnest essays for me to read, I think, in my entire career. So, I'm really, really happy with that. We've had topics from MMA to genetically engineering crops, which have been really awesome, monastery school, and I just have just a little bit of their work, um, that's up here, some of their sample thesis statements, um, just to show you kind of the level of where they're at. And so, I'll, I'll read the first one for you, and then after that, we can. Although IQ scores have been long thought to be the best indicator of intelligence available due to their reliability and objectivity, in reality, IQ is not the best measure due to the dismissal of confounding variables like educational attainment, a limited scope, which leaves out creativity and emotional intelligence, and a limited ability to predict success in skilled positions. So, they are really writing at a very high level, and it is amazing to see. And I've had so much fun reading them. And then, lastly, I'm working on our syllabus for Comp 2 currently, um, and so Comp 2 will have at least three essays, and one is a sustained research essay that they do throughout the entire, the entire semester where they need to create an annotated bibliography, and they'll have other various writing assignments, and we will have to hit some Shakespeare in there just to make sure we're hitting those requirements for the Illinois State. So, we will definitely have that by the end. So, thank you all so much, and this is what we're doing, writing. Um, I do have a letter from one of my students, and I am transcribing the other one. It was handwritten, and it's a little, so I will give that to you, but this is just a little bit about their time, because coming from them, I think it's a much more impactful about how this class is, is preparing them for the outside. So, I'll send that around for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Well, Shakespeare, you're doing.
Um, I'm thinking, taming it true.
Oh, love it.
Because we can do some comparative analyses with that, so I am excited.
Alex from Real Neighborhood.
That's right. That's right.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you. Uh, under public comment tonight, we have John Murphy. Does that come forward? The parameters for public comment, you get five minutes.
There was an issue last week at the school, and I just wanted to bring it to your guys' attention, because I've already sent emails to Springfield and to Washington DC.
Okay.
On Veterans Day, my son asked if he could wear a hat. I read the email, said red, white, and blue, and I went, as long as you're not wearing it in class, shouldn't be an issue, because I know that you're allowed to self-express yourself at this school. It's Veterans Day. It was a red, white, blue hat. I told him he could wear it. It was mine. He wore it. He was asked to take it off, and from what I understand, from what he told me, he had, it was before school started. He was talking to his friend. He had put his books and things down. Gentlemen came up, asked him to take it off. He took it off. Well, now it's time to head to his locker. He's got a cowboy hat in one hand and all this stuff, so he told me he had to pick it up, and he had to walk past that guy, and he wrote him up. I find out about it, and I start a process of calling and getting to the bottom of it, because it's Veterans Day. Who was he affecting? How was he hindering anyone's education? And it wasn't. It was before school. It was in a hallway. Does not matter, because he didn't follow someone's rule. But the person who gave him the write-up, I personally don't believe had the right to tell him. He was wearing something that depicts his personal belief, American flag, on Veterans Day. The Supreme Court ruled in 1969 that kids do not lose their right of self-expression when they touch the front of the school, as long as what they're wearing doesn't abrupt class and has a clear message. It's an American flag. It's a clear message. It's on Veterans Day. He wasn't in a class, so he wasn't hindering anyone's learning. It just got under this one person's skin that he didn't listen to him. And he did, actually. He just didn't know how to get the hat without it getting damaged and his things back to the locker, and I brought it up. You guys have cameras. Did you see anything? Nobody had the time to look. I love America. I love my son. If my son wants to express himself, he should be allowed to. And I offered to do the detention myself, since I gave him permission to wear the hat. That's unacceptable. I think it's unacceptable to tell a kid he can't wear a hat with red, white, and blue on it on Veterans Day. But it doesn't matter what I think. I just pay your guys' salaries. So, on and on and on. He will be served his detention tomorrow, because I was informed, if he doesn't have it served by Friday, it becomes an hour. That has to be served on a Wednesday, and he only has till the Wednesday when he comes back from, uh, Thanksgiving break, and then it becomes him losing a day of school, all because he decided to wear a patriotic hat on Veterans Day. My father, who is a vet, is, he's like, I can't go in there. I would lose my mind on these people. And I'm like, I get it. All the people at the VFW Hall also said, this is ridiculous. And I just think you guys should need, should know. I have tried, and, and know, the people I've talked to on the phone have tried to get me upset, and they did get me around once and used it as reasoning off the phone. Said they wouldn't talk to me again till I called and apologized for raising my tone. So, I called, had to leave a message, and waited four days, Thursday, Friday, Monday, and today. And then I had to call eight times to actually get to talk to a person to explain it's important you get ahold of me. And then they explained to me the timeline. He has two more days to serve this detention. It doesn't matter. I'm still arguing, because he has a right to express himself. I thought this was pretty simple. But thank you for letting me speak. Yeah, I feel better. I got off my chest, and you guys know what's happening. You guys have a wonderful night, and I think you're doing a great, a great job.
Thank you. Okay, under finance, 6.1, any motion approval for the, for the bills for LaSalle-Putownship High School?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Grzania?
Yes.
Mr. Mirba?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion approval for the bills for LP Area Career Center?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Mirba?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Grzania?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion approval for a payroll report?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Grzania?
Yes.
Mr. Mirba?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Uh, 6.2, any motion approval for financial records as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mirba?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Grzania?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Uh, under correspondence, 7.1, TIF reimbursements. The Village of North Utica, TIF reimbursement, TIF 1, thirty thousand, six hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents. Village of North Utica, uh, tax reimbursement, TIF 2, five thousand, eighty-five dollars and sixty-one cents. And City of LaSalle, intergovernmental agreement, TIFs, eighty thousand, nine hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety-seven cents for total TIF reimbursement of a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, seven hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. Um, 7.2, we had a thank you card from the Kurtz family for the flowers in support in memory of Mrs. Pat Kurtz, who's the mother-in-law of Mrs. Sherri Kurtz. Uh, Board Committee reports, 8.1, Building and Grounds, Mr. Ferrari.
Uh, the Building and Grounds Committee met, uh, over two weeks ago on November 3rd. Uh, first item that came up was, uh, an update regarding the Ag building, and bid openings were scheduled to take place two days later on November 5th, uh, with, uh, one adjustment to the base bid, looking for substantial completion by May of 2026. And of course, we held a special board meeting back on the 10th to award the contract following the opening of those bids. Uh, due to a fire code change, the passenger elevator in the main building failed inspection. The doorway is now considered a lobby under newly passed legislation, and so a smoke detector needs to be added to the elevator. They are in the process of taking care of that. Work on the dance studio floor is progressing, and, uh, they're trying to locate the necessary materials and provide us with, uh, pricing on the repair work. They're working on the, uh, updated signage out at the baseball fields at the sports complex, and, uh, they're going to have a, one of the things that they're going to add is a, um, uh, list on the softball fields showing the various softball championships, similar to what we have for basketball at the gym and things like that. So, that, that's a good thing. There was a update on the summer projects. Uh, still working, uh, regarding the Sip and Savor project, uh, the district is looking to pursue the performance bond of the contractor that failed to complete the work. Uh, they're waiting for, uh, some additional materials to light up the, uh, the lights out on the, uh, courtyard.
On Charter.
On Charter Street, and, uh, the benches apparently will, should be coming in sometime in December. And, uh, the work on the gym roof is complete, and there's just a few minor punch list items to be completed, and, uh, let's see, they're already starting to plan projects for next summer. Uh, and that's under, under consideration right now. And finally, uh, the resurfacing of the track out at the sports complex has also been completed and is once again open to the public.
Good.
That was it.
All right. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Ferrari. Finance Committee, Mr. Mirba.
Yeah, we met on Wednesday, November 12th. We are thirty-three point three-three percent of the way through the fiscal year. Revenue is at fifty-one point six-six percent, and expenditures are at twenty-nine point one-three percent. Um, we did discuss the tentative levy, and, uh, that is an action item here tonight. The, uh, the projections from the county estimated a seven point one increase, uh, percent increase in EAV. We are recommending a four point eight-seven tax levy request, and so that is beneath the, uh, five percent truth and taxation hearing, so there, there won't be a hearing for that. And that will maintain a flat tax rate for the district. Um, and we did recommend that out of our committee. We did discuss the timelines of the Series 25-26 debt certificates, which are being issued, um, and that is also an action item, uh, for tonight. We did discuss the bus contract. Um, we have been negotiating, uh, one-year contract extension with Johannes Bus Service, and we did, the group did, that is a consortium, and the group did negotiate a four point two-five percent increase. Um, and then we went through all the construction projects, kind of a tracking where we're all at. Mr. Ferrari just went through all those, so we just went through the financial part of all those items. And then we did, uh, accept to recommend, um, approval of transfer of funds, uh, which is another, um, action item on tonight's agenda, and we did approve that.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Mirba. Programs Committee, Mrs. Taliani.
We also met on Wednesday, November 12th, and we started with going over the 2025 school board, uh, school report card, which was, um, the district receiving a commendable designation. There's going to be a time where we get a presentation on the school report card, and I'm just gonna, spoiler alert, it's lovely. Um, the SMART goals that, that they are working on, led by our administrative team, have really, um, increased, uh, the graduation rate, the, the kids, the chronic absenteeism, the kids are coming to school. It, it, it's awesome, based on the huddles, and the administrative and division chairs have been really doing great things, and our faculty and staff. It, it, it was great to see. Uh, there are a couple of course modifications, just tweaking the names of them. Uh, one is from transitional math to life and career math. Those are for our life skills students. Uh, that's just a, a name to track that better. And then, um, from design and turf management to horticulture for a, a part of our Ag program. Uh, those are both action items to recommend that we approve those course modifications. Uh, Ms. Lance went over the 26-27 program of studies. There are a few changes, once again, uh, something that they do yearly. I call them housekeeping things, just tweaks of names, and we recommend that we approve that as well. We thank our admin team for all the hard work. Ms. Lance did a lot of reading in that program, so, and that's all we had.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Mrs. Taliani.
Thank you.
Policy Committee, Mrs. Alcorn.
Policy Committee did not meet, but I wanted to report on the group, the AI Committee that we are working with. Um, they are, they have looked at Magic School, um, and gone through that last month, and this month is Gemini, and, um, it is, it is interesting to see the different programs and platforms that are available, uh, to the school. They are going to be working through these individually and then making a decision collectively on which one they think is more appropriate. And then the end result will be policies and, um, guardrails and things that we're going to, to decide how we're going to manage that within the school. So, um, we did not review the press policies, but we are working on the AI. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Alcorn. Uh, administrative reports, the superintendent reports in your packet, the principal's reports in your packet, and the athletic director's reports in your packet. Uh, Director of Area Career Center, Dr. Lang.
Hello. Speaking of AI, I decided to use Gemini, because I'm on that committee to do my board report. So, I, I did my little prompt, the different things that have went on this, uh, this month, and it spit out this lovely little, um, summary of the different things. Three different programs that I'm kind of highlighting tonight. Aviation program, through the work of Brian Leahy and then Joe Zeeman, who is the volunteer parent in that program, they were able to get the Young Eagles program brought to the students. And basically what that does is, we're paying for flights. The career center is part of the tuition and that sort of thing. We pay for flights for the students when they get to the airport. And we usually do one or two flights, but the Young Eagles program actually pays for that flight, so that was part of it. Um, once they have that flight time, they also get a logbook that stays with them, because as they're, as they're doing the flight training with an instructor, they have to keep track of the hours that they have to be able to get it. So, they, that actually goes along with the Young Eagles. And then they also get refresher courses. So, let's say one of our students that graduates, they go do something else for a little while, and they want to come back and do the flight training, that they can always go back and do a refresher with the Young Eagles, because it's part of, it's part of it. So, that was pretty cool. Last year, I reported about the health occupations, going to visit National University Health Sciences in Lombard. They did the same thing again this year. The students always love it. You can tell what great time that they have with the cadaver and all the things that they do, because there's always pictures of them on the bus sleeping on the way back. So, I know they had a really great time doing that. And their space. I've been down there probably ten times, probably in the last few weeks, just to, you know, talk to them and kind of interact with them in the new space, and it's amazing. You know, they have, we have the, the two instructive time teachers down there, and then we have the, the lab instructor that helps keep us to the right code for IDPH. And they're all just kind of interacting, and they're doing their skills and, and testing on them to get themselves ready for spring. Um, Culinary Arts, they've been doing some amazing things. Uh, they made two hundred cupcakes for an event, and they did the principal's breakfast, which I told you guys about last, uh, last month, and they've been doing a lot of cookies for like parent-teacher conferences and those kinds of things. And every single day, uh, all that smell wafts up in my office, and I'm gonna have to get new pants. Um, also outreach, this is the month, November is always the big month for schools, high schools coming in, and then after Thanksgiving and break, usually we'll get some of the, the junior highs that come in, that sort of thing. But I had Putnam County, gave them a tour. We always, we always start in the auditorium, and we give them, you know, an overview of what it's like to come to the ACC, and then the teachers, they always do an amazing job talking about what they do. You can tell how passionate they are when you bring some, you know, potential students into their classroom, and they're always really happy to talk about that. We talked to some Ottawa students, and then a few Lumoy students, and had a couple parents come with that group. So, Princeton's supposed to be coming on Friday. So, any questions? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lang.
Thank you.
Uh, Director of Communications, Mr. Baker.
Good evening, everyone. Um, well, as you've been packed up, we're making the transition from our fall sports into winter, so we're really getting ready. Uh, for now, where Friday night is Meet the Cab, so my team's been busy, um, creating all the content and getting the graphics ready for all the boys' intros on Friday night, uh, so we can really kick off the season, uh, right, and, uh, just kind of spreading the word about all those events as well as all kinds of other things that are going on. Uh, we did live stream and do some extra materials like we always do for Veterans Day, uh, last week, or I kind of lose track of the time now, um, as well as other odds and ends. Oh, and then the other piece, uh, just because we were talking about it beforehand, um, I worked with Mr. Hinchey on Monday night. Uh, we hosted a, um, meeting on the Ag Center and what's gonna be happening over there. Um, just had a nice little group of community members, um, a lot of the families that we've been seeing at the Ag things, uh, to kind of, kind of get, get the ball rolling on that. I think it's off to a good start. Then Mr. Hinchey, again, today, because I guess that Ag program never sleeps. Um, they were out in, uh, LaSalle Rotary Club, giving a presentation about all the things they do. So, um, they're keeping it busy there, and we're helping them out as much as we can on that. Um, and then, uh, in the foundation world, there is a meeting tomorrow night. Um, it's kind of a quiet fall for the foundation, so really the big thing they're gonna be getting ready for is trivia night, which is coming up, April 11th. Um, so if you want to start marking in your calendars. Um, I know, uh, Mrs. DePape's already getting, wants to get ready to start promoting that during basketball season, start selling fifty-fifty tickets as early as possible, so we can really get that, uh, prize up as high as we, as we can for, for our fans. But, um, that's all kind of the big stuff, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
Okay, under new business, 10.1, any motion approval of the resolution authorizing, providing for an installation, installment purchase agreement for the purpose of paying the cost of purchasing real or personal property or both, in and for LaSalle-Putownship High School, District 120, LaSalle and Bureau Counties, Illinois, and authorizing and providing for the issue of not to exceed point four and authorizing and providing for the issue of not to exceed point, four point five million-dollar obligation, general obligation bonds, debt certificates, limited tax, Series Twenty-Twenty-Five of the said district, evidence of the rights to payment under such agreement, prescribing the details of the agreement and certificates, and providing for the security for and the means of payment under the agreement of the certificates.
Second.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Mirba?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasanian?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Sorry, yes. Changed my name.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Ten point two, will be tabled. That's the resolution authorizing Superintendent transfer the following amounts into the O and M Fund. Ten point three, any motion approval of the place attended the Twenty-Twenty-Five tax levy for the school year 2026, 2027 on public display?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Mirba?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasanian?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Ten point four, any motion approval of a one-year extension for the 2026, 2027 school year of the existing transportation agreement between LaSalle Pre-Tonship High School, District 120, and Johannes Bus Service Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasanian?
Yes.
Mr. Mirba?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Ten point five, any motion approval for the Agriculture Center building application permit?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasanian?
Yes.
Mr. Mirba?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Ten point six, any motion, motion approval to induct the class of 2025 LP Hall of Honor, inductees recommended by the selection committee.
So moved.
Mr. Mirba?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasanian?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Mr. Pacetto's on that list.
Ten point seven, the motion of approval for the 2025 School Report Card.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasanian?
Yes.
Mr. Mirba?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Ten point eight, motion approval of the following course modifications for the 2026, 2027 school year. A, rename Transitional Math to Life and Career Math. And B, rename Landscape Design and Turf Management to Horticulture.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasanian?
Yes.
Mr. Mirba?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Ten point nine, any motion approval for 2026, 2027 Program of Studies?
So moved.
Second.